The Board of Supervisors of Penn Township now call this meeting to order. We will first rise with the pledge allegiance and the moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business I'd like to bring out was that back in our December meeting, we did vote and made a motion and to appoint a solicitor for the township, which is Mark Allhouse. In our reorganizational meeting, it was discussed whether or not if we had to reappoint him at the organizational meeting since in December, several days before, we had just nominated him and voted him in. But to make sure that we make sure everything is in order for the reorganizational meeting is that at this time here, I'd like to place a motion on the floor that we appoint Mark Allhouse as a solicitor for Penn Township for the year of 2016.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I didn't really prepare Mark for this, but at this time here, our solicitor is Mark Allhouse. If you would just like to take a moment and introduce yourself to the citizens of Penn Township.
My name is Mark Allhouse. I have a solo practice in Sherman's Dale, Pennsylvania, opened up in 2003. I currently represent seven municipalities, including Penn, Miller, and Spring, in Perry County, North Middleton Township, in Cumberland County, Dillsburg Borough in York County, and as of February 8th, I will represent Mount Holly Springs in Cumberland County. I've been in practice for 20 years doing municipal work, started out as a solicitor down in South Middleton Township. Of the townships, I represent, three have police departments, including Penn, three have water authorities, including Penn. I'm happy for the opportunity. I live over in Sherman's Dale, and I'm sure throughout the years, I'll meet a lot of you or run into old people that I've already met down the road. I'm also, for those of you that are interested in, you know, what I do in the community, I'm also a member of District 3 Tuscaraway Wildland Fire Crew, and I travel west a couple times a year to fight wildland forest fires. And also an avid hunter, fisherman, you know. And no kids, have a wife, some pets, and live up in the mountains and the woods. I call the solicitorship or the lawyer thing what I do for a living, but what I am as a person is a Perry County guy that just likes to go out and hang out with people and be in the woods.
Thank you. We have on the agenda tonight also, oh, part of the appointment for solicitor, we also need to appoint a liaison to the solicitor. We had discussed with the supervisors, I would be interested in fulfilling that responsibility to be the liaison. So we would need a motion on the table to do that if that's the wish of the board.
I'd like to nominate Brian Peters as the liaison to the attorney.
Do we have a second?
Is the nomination okay, or do you want actual motion?
We need a motion, I guess, just to make sure it's correct.
Would you be willing to change that to a motion as opposed to a nomination?
A motion, yes.
My second a motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have it. There is a number three on the agenda for roadmaster appointment that had been addressed in the reorganizational meeting. Supervisor McGuire is temporarily appointed at the reorganizational meeting for roadmaster. So until we get that position posted and hired for, Mr. McGuire is appointed as the On the executive session, we had three executive sessions since we last met. We had two of them were on personnel issues, as in looking for a operational road crew. And we'll be discussing that later on this evening, hopefully. And also, we had a executive session where the three supervisors, our new solicitor along with our former solicitor, had a meeting to kind of get our new solicitors' feet wet on what's going on in the township. Okay? At this time here, we're going to have their recognition of visitors. We have on the agenda tonight Henry Holman Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me up front so I can get out of here. Okay? Brian, he got my hold of me and asked me to fill in here to make some things happen before you guys get through this. And I wanted to give a detailed report on this snowstorm and what all took place out here. On Friday, the 22nd, we prepped all of the township equipment. Everything was working fine, was all on top order. At 6:00 PM, we came back in and we prepped all the hills with salt and skid, King Cora, all the important ones, the hard ones, where you have. And it paid off because they later on gave us an awful lot of traction in awful other areas where we didn't need to worry about getting plowed on. And it worked out that it was to be done that way. That prep was done. We were soon plowing snow. And the first trip up King Cora Hill with the Ford 8000, there was a hydraulic hose broken, the spinner. And I had no spinner to put any skid on the road. So the prep that we put on before really came into play. Kept that road open for quite a while. Returned the truck to the shop, parked the truck, and filled the stirling, who was sitting out here with the skid, and returned to the plowing. Lost time about an hour out there, which was much needed out there doing it. At 3:30 Saturday in the morning, after we had plowed that night, and 3:30 in the morning, had a flat tire in the rear of the 550 on the dhole. So we had to put it in in the shed, jack it up, get another tire on it to keep it going, and back out, back out to the road. And we had another lost hour of time, but we got that jacked up and took the two of us to get it done. So we pulled two plows out of service. At 10:30 the next morning, a rural drive at the dead end, turn around, which is a tough place to turn around, and no way to cinder or skid or plow to where you turn, an awful lot of snow, I got hung up and couldn't move with the truck. So I left it set, called, left the truck parked, come back up, removed the broken spinner on the Ford 8000, and used it strictly as a plow truck. Now I got one sitting down in the coat, can't be moved, but meanwhile, we still had roads to plow. So we were okay with that. And I returned to the shop, removed the spinner, used the Ford 8000 for a plow truck only. At 4 o'clock, the spinner quit on the 550 that we have out here. And now we're down to no trucks in operation at the present time, the spinner back. And the computer in the 550 out there showed a fault, and we couldn't correct it. We looked at the manual. Everything else worked fine. And so we were without a spinner on the 550, which was much needed, because that was the ones that we used on Mountain Street, Sunshine Hills and whatnot, which didn't want to put any skid down. So we kept using it as a plow. And whatever happened to the tool, we found out later. But at 7:00 PM, that later on today, we kept plowing all day. We had three trucks out. We found time to put chains on the Ford 8000. And we went down and removed this stuck stirling, because that was crossways of Bob Schaefer's daughter's house. That's the turnaround here driveway. So we got the truck back up and got it in. And at 8 o'clock, we packed it in. And at 8 o'clock, I'd like to thank Pickles here. He asked whether he could use the township pickup truck. And until we got back at 3:00 in the morning, he plowed the entire parking lot, cleaned this up for us, saved us a tremendous amount of work that we had to do. So he took over with that truck, and we got up. We got up, we got back in here at 3:00. The only roads that did not get plowed that day were Holman Drive and up onto Hill Road, up to where Barb Hamilton lived. We did not get through them, they were completely full. And thanks to my son that busted a path in our lane down there, I still had three and a half mile walk home through two foot of snow to get to my house. It was a tough walk, let me tell you. But we returned at 3:00 AM, and we took the stirling spinner and placed it on the Ford 8000. Now they were compatible. And we got back out. Now we got the truck is best for plowing, and it'll go most anywhere with the weight through the snow without chains or whatnot. So most of the roads at this time had about four to six inches of snow left on them. I opened Holman Drive to John Gerner's place with the Ford 8000, pushed that heavy snow the whole way up, and I was able to get up and get that road opened up finally. We got back up to Sustiny Hills, got everybody else open. The other two trucks were moving where they could. We started out at the other end of the township and kept moving this way, one at a time, opening up the roads, cleaning the cul-de-sacs for them. Steve was in the pickup truck cleaning up, the other one was busting roads open. And knowing Sunshine Hills needed attention, I took the big Ford with a cinder spreader up there, which is definitely a no-no. Eisenhower Boulevard and Mullenberg, when you come down those roads and join Lincoln Street, there is no place to swing at all. Matter of fact, I got hung up at the bottom of Mullenberg, was lucky to be able to get myself out. But we got the place rolled back and got the streets rolled back, and I got cinders on it, which it melted down pretty good. And then I attacked Mullenberg last. And somewhere in Mullenberg, sliced a rear tire in that big truck and blew a tire out. Just as I was finishing at the top of the hill. I don't know what was in there. I got hung up there. I was lucky to get cinders behind me and move back and forth, but finally got out. Now we got another truck down. So I bring that one back. As I'm pulling in out here, the inside dhole blew. Now I'm on the rim. So we parked the truck inside, okay? And we continued on. And we put it inside, and we shut down at 6:00. But we had all roads open at that time on Sunday evening that were passable to the best of our knowledge. I don't know of any place where we put them on Sunday evening. Monday, first thing we did was sent Steve up to get a hydraulic hose for on the other spinner. He was back in about an hour from Charlie Smith. And we installed that. I called the tech, he came up, took a look at the truck. Nothing wrong with the computer, nothing wrong with the hydraulic sound noise out there, but the coaxial cable has multiple wires in it. There was a wire somewhere down through that cable shorted out. So something that don't normally go bad. They had to order one. He called me this morning, said we should have it maybe by Friday, but they'll be up to replace it Monday, and that truck will be back 100%. We put the new tires on. I ordered rims and stuff for the other ones since they were damaged. I opened the diamond right away. They came yesterday. We put them on this morning, first thing. So the Ford 8000 and the stirling at present time, both have spinners on them, both in operation. The only truck that isn't in operation is the spinner on the 550 as soon as the tech can get here and put that on. That truck will be back in operation. So we continued to widen the roads. I was prepared to cinder the roads for school to open Tuesday. The school shut down because of some roads that weren't available to them yet. So we took all day yesterday, and we widened every road in Penn Township out here in rural areas to cinder down this morning and last night. They were all bare. School bus fiber, we're very happy. Couple of them stopped, talked about it. And they had good roads, and they were all happy about it. So we, I used the backhoe to clean up Business Campus up here around the medical center, where it was that heavy and that deep, you couldn't push it with a truck. So I cleaned that out, widened that out up there. I also had to take the backhoe home, because going in Holman Lane, it's banks on both sides, no push spoke. I took the backhoe down there, and I cleaned that route out up to Mr. Gerner's place and returned it. So the trucks are back in business. The wiring harness is ordered. And in spite of about four and a half to five hours, I figure in lost time, that we weren't out there doing breakdowns and repairs and moving trucks around, we got the roads cleaned up and got on top of things pretty quick. I don't know, everybody said they never saw anything like this with a snowstorm, and I never saw any equipment break it, but I contributed to one thing, full moon on the 23rd. Only thing that I can contribute to. The only other thing I would like to ask everybody to know, Steve goes in for surgery Friday. I asked you to keep him in the slots till he recovers. He has been seeing me these last couple days, a good working partner, and he's done a good job. And he's a little concerned, a little uptight about his surgery, but I informed him that he needs to get himself healed up and get back out here. I only have one other thing, a question, and this is not trying to micromanage, but only something I'm going to ask. The road contractor, whether you're still going to pay the faculty and various people? Ask me. I said you have to ask the supervisors. And if you are, it would be a nice thing to put in the newsletter, let them know that you're going to continue to do that or you're not going to do that. I always said, always tried to do that. And the contractors at this time year are hungry for work. The quicker you get that bid proposal in, the quicker you'll get the better price. So I always got them in as quick as I could at the beginning of the year. There's no reason why I only offer that to you. You can put it off as long as you want. But if it goes in early, you can have the pre-bid done and have that contract awarded by March, because this is the time of year they like to fill their schedule up. That's all I have to offer. I don't have anything else. I was glad to be out there, and the biggest thrill I had was plowing that new road on Linton Hill. That was the pleasure for the first time, instead of a nightmare. That's all I have. Any questions? I have two other things. One, up in Lincoln Street, had a call from the Borough today that feels that we plowed snow over on 630 on their sidewalk up there. I was up, took a look at it. I guess I could get argumental about it as to how that snow was there, but we didn't turn that way, and we don't go that way when we plow. But in lieu of any controversy on it, if the board would approve, I'll take the backhoe tomorrow and go up there and remove that, and the end of the controversy. Also, at the end of, Cece had a complaint, not a complaint, but she called in at the end of Schoolhouse there on the left-hand side. I just talked to her. That was her neighbor that pushed that big pile out over top of her property, that the site distance isn't there. I don't normally, wouldn't do that on my own. If you guys want me to remove it, you let me know, and I'll remove it tomorrow. I'll get down and take care of it. It does affect the site distance, and then he pushed the big pile down along 1115. And that's not us. We usually feather it out so you can pull out there. You want me to remove it? You guys take action on it, let me know, and I'll take care of it first thing tomorrow.
In reference to, first of all, Henry, I do want to thank you, and I'm sure it's a sentiment of the board, for your dedication and for stepping up and helping us out with this event and doing what you're doing. It is deeply appreciated, and I thank you for doing what you're doing and your crew that you put together to do that also. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Let me know if there's two items.
Well, we did discuss this evening here just shortly about the Lincoln Street situation. We take your word out that you didn't do it.
I don't mean to get arguable.
So just to be neighborly, like you said, to be neighborly, be kind to our neighbor. Our recommendation, our thought was that if we provided the truck, they could bring, if Duncan would be willing to bring their front-end loader, since it's right there in town, bring it up. We bring one of our trucks up, they can go in and scoop it up, load it up, and we can take it and put it there in the backfield or something, just so we can, you know, to get rid of that pile on Lincoln Street.
Let me ask you a question. In lieu of making things move, since I got another full schedule tomorrow, instead of trying to coordinate with them when they're going to be there and when we're going to be there, why don't you just let us clean it up? It'd go a lot quicker. All right, so we'll jump first thing on in the morning if you say okay.
As far as the sight line.
What's that?
As far as the sight line, if that's a problem as far as sight's concerned, I hadn't been on the road.
Correct.
He's willing to do it.
It's bad down there at Cece's.
Yeah.
We didn't place it there, the neighbor placed it.
Should he not be responsible for removing that?
Well, he should be, but he didn't do it.
He should be. It should be addressed with him.
Definitely.
Should be addressed with him, but that if we can get the information on the neighbor, we know for a fact that he did.
Yes.
Plow it down, okay.
I was down looking at a road.
If you could get the information and just send a letter from the Board of Supervisors, just asking them to be a little bit more watchful about where they, and again, it was historic snow, but still, where they put it was not a good place to put it. Okay? If you would, Henry, take care of that also, just knock it down and...
It's going to have to be, I'm going to have to go between, you're going to have to scoop it up, Ryan, take it across the dump down over guardrails the other side, where I can't even park a truck there without shutting that whole road system down there.
Okay.
But I do have an idea how we can tend to it. Steve will be available tomorrow. We'll be able to flag there, we can put it across the road. I mean, it's a huge mound of it.
It's definitely blocking the sight line.
Oh, yeah, it sure is. It sure is.
To rely on the resident there to clean it up, you're wasting time.
Wasting time. So I'm glad to take care of it. If you guys agree to it.
Need a motion, Chairman? consensus?
I would just say consensus is that we agree to have you take care of it.
Take care of it first thing in the morning.
Just one question, by taking it across the road, we're not violating any DEP or anything like that?
Not that I know of. I see.
Well, at this point here, there's already snow there from the road.
Yeah, we're okay, yeah.
So, okay.
It was awful private property. No salt or no nothing in that. That's plain pure snow there, come out of his driveway.
All right, thank you, sir. Henry, your property turnaround?
What's that, Howard?
Your statement you wanted to make?
Well, I took care of that, hopefully at the end of the year, you know what I'm saying? I only do that because of what transpired in the past, where the township took people's property, because they used that road freely for 20, over 21 years to turn around with no objections, and then they claimed it, and the guy lost his property over. So therefore, when they come in there, I have a statement, or I have, I put it out there for a matter of minutes, township don't park their equipment there, they don't turn around on my farm, they don't do nothing. But please, that's there. But I always yield to that. When they need to come in, ask me, they can park their equipment there, they're safe there, they can turn around there. But I just want you to know I object. Unless I give my written permission, or you have it from me. Saves a lot of trouble. I saw people lose some ground that way. Don't want it happening again. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
More equipment out of order.
Okay, recognition of visitors, continue.
Linda Gauss?
Nothing.
Bob Gauss?
Nothing at this time.
You too? Cece?
No, I think it's going to be addressed later, thank you.
The PA won't call?
No.
Oh, no, the other one. Okay. Jesse?
Nothing at this time.
Luke?
Nothing.
Jim Fickle?
Nothing.
He's gone. Chris?
Under item 10.
Okay. John Holman?
You have no objections if we record you?
No, that's fine.
I'm here to address two issues. The last time we were here, I spoke to you about a write no request that I put into the police department.
Yes.
And your records officer had no knowledge of it, so I brought the paperwork along.
Can I?
Want a copy of the paperwork?
I got a copy of paperwork, because when you put into the Office of Open Records at the state level, they, I put in for the appeal, they sent me the paperwork at that time. What happened is, you sent a request to Mr., to Officer Carlson. Unfortunately, the request itself was blank. He sent you back an email telling you that on February 9th. And then on the 17th, I received the two letters from the Office of Open Records with their response to it. And the second letter was a final determination that the appeal was dismissed as the appeal failed to state why the records were public. I wasn't copied until after, could have already sent the emails back on that. But Mr. Carlson was not the office, the open records officer at that time, I was.
You missed one email.
Okay. The email that I missed.
He did email back that the record was blank. Evidently, when you fill in their PDF...
Yeah, it's not a fillable PDF to send out. You actually have to...
So I sent him an email back and asked him to tell me if it came back a blank again. I have a copy of that.
Okay.
So I don't, maybe you missed that one. And asked him to respond, and maybe you just didn't get the copy, and I would hand deliver it. So I'm going to give you a copy of everything, that way I have a complete record. And also, on your response, you indicate that I am still under criminal or non-criminal investigation. Also, we discussed the residents' rights at the nursing home. I gave you the state, federal, and Concora's own policy regarding residents' rights. Did you all have a chance to review that?
Yes.
After review, do you have any questions about the residents' rights?
Actually, yeah, I do have a couple of questions. In layman's lingo, we would say somebody would be declared incompetent.
That's a term that's thrown around by individuals, particularly in the medical field, but it has no legal status. The correct legal term is incapacitated. And only the court can adjudicate somebody to be incapacitated. So, and that would lead me back, if you have a second, that leads me back to the letter that your former chairman referred to. He read excerpts from it, but he didn't read the letter. If I may, this is a letter from Capuzzi Alder, signed by Glenn Parna, who represents Concora Pythium. And he says, "As you know, our firm represents Concora Pythium in Duncan, and its administrator is him over there. By a letter dated 1824, you were instructed not to enter the grounds of Concora Pythium Home unless invited by a resident of the home, a legal, a resident's legal representative or the administrator. On January 1st, 2015, you knowingly violated his instructions by appearing at the Concora Pythium Home in a false pretense that you had been invited by several residents. In fact, you had received consent, you had not received consent to visit the home by any competent resident. That word has no legal status. The correct word is incapacitated. Furthermore, it appears that you improperly obtained written consent to visit the home from several incompetent residents." So there's the admission, I don't need, nobody needs consent forms to visit their friends in a nursing home. And by the way, the article that was written by the reporter, our last meeting with you folks, he inaccurately called those folks patients. They are not patients. Patients are in hospitals typically, and there are rules that apply to visiting them. People that are in nursing homes are residents, they pay... People that are in nursing homes are residents, they pay to be there, they have every right that you have as a resident in your own home. That's covered by state and federal law, which I gave you all copies of. So in this letter, he admits that we have, and I did have, following their instructions, which are not legal instructions, but we did get signed requests to visit. So we went, go in with those, and now the letter states, and say, "In fact, you had not received consent to visit the home by any competent resident. We checked the court records, only one person that had signed a request for visit has been adjudicated incapacitated. The rest of these folks are not adjudicated incapacitated." So incompetent is just a word that is meaningless, it has no legal standing. So it says, "Furthermore, it appears you improperly obtained written consent to visit the home from several incompetent residents." That's akin to me saying that any one of you that have a residence at home, that you're incompetent, and that your friends don't have a right to visit you. That's exactly what it is. Now, it goes on to say, "When confronted by a Penn Township police officer, you repeatedly disregarded the officer's instructions to leave the premises, thereby disrupting the operations of the facility and causing great alarm among the residents and staff." Now, I stated here before that we were advised by our attorneys during this investigation, and I'm gonna call an investigation because it appears to be somewhat of a conspiracy among individuals in Perry County to deprive those residents of their rights. We've been advised by several attorneys that if we feel there's illegal activity going on, we may record those conversations. So the conversation was recorded while we're visiting there, and your police officer's conversation was also recorded. This description of our interaction with your police officer is a total fabrication of the law, of, total fabrication, and it is a misdemeanor to use police to deprive somebody of their rights. So evidently, I don't know if you have a report, if your police have a report, if they don't, but it appears that I'm still under investigation. Your police reported to have one, better line up with the reporting of your officer, who admitted while we were there that he knows people wants to be there. And he also stated at the end of conversation, he said, "I can see you're not causing any trouble, and I'll note that in your report." That is diametrically opposed to this letter. This is a complete fabrication, this is a crime. Says, "As a result of your recent conduct, it has been determined that your presence at the Concora Pythium Home must be conditioned upon administrator's verification of the afforded consent of any residents you may want to visit. Accordingly, you are hereby notified that you are strictly prohibited from entering the Cora Pythium property under any circumstances unless you at first request and obtain written approval by the, of the administrator." Mitch Himmelberger is not a prison warden, and your police are not to be used as prison guards. They are to be effective members of the elder law task force, they are to be enforcing the law. These residents have the same right as any US citizen does, they pay to be there, they are not prisoners. And we offered before to educate your police on the law regarding the elders, and we've got no response. A copy of this letter has been provided to Penn Township Police Department, evidently that letter is still on file. It is my understanding that if you enter Concora Pythium Home premises without the express written approval of the administrator, you will be in violation of 18PS Section 3503, Defiant Trespass, a misdemeanor offense. Now, we've given you the law, I've told you that this is a total fabrication, it is a lie, and we have the proof. So my question is now, we requested that you have your police officers stand down, we don't want us to end up in a lawsuit against Penn Township, or anyone individually, or your police officers, or them individually. So, you know, we're gonna have, have a conversation, is your solicitor gonna look at the evidence of the law, and what's going on in this township with your police? Or are you gonna stand, stand them down, or are we happy to support?
It appears that the majority of the issue here is with the administration of King Cora. Would you agree?
I'm sorry?
I said, "It appears that the core of this deals with King Cora and the administration."
Well, he's evidently used your police to enforce, you know, violate the residents' rights and my rights.
I don't know if we have any jurisdiction to be able to tell the police to stand down.
Problem.
Yeah, we're gonna speak, yeah, absolutely, we're three members.
The problem right here, sir, is, the letter that you just read to us is commonly referred to as a trespass notice, okay?
Yeah.
And it's in reference to defiant trespass under the Crimes Code of the state of Pennsylvania, okay? That is the law that the police department are sworn to uphold. We can't tell the police officer not to enforce the law. What we can do is make a suggestion to the chief, that he run this matter past the district attorney's office, and get the district attorney's recommendation on how to pursue it and proceed with the matter. But we can't sit here and tell a police officer not to enforce the law. That is a trespass notice, it would appear as if your, your dispute is with the management of the nursing home.
No, sir.
And I'm not going to advise, nor would I suggest or agree to advising a police officer not to enforce the laws of the Commonwealth, that's me.
What law is he enforcing, sir?
Right there, trespassing is the notice that you receive, sir.
So.
It's commonly referred to as a trespass notice.
Anyone walks into a nursing home to visit a resident, they're trespassing?
That is a civil matter between you and the administration of the nursing home.
No, sir. If I came to your house, and they called the police, and the police come out and told me that I'm not allowed to visit you, that's the same thing.
No, it is not.
What's the difference? Give me the law, cite me the law.
It's not the same thing, sir, it's an entirely different set of circumstances, and I'm not gonna sit here and dispute that with you, okay? This is not the forum for such a thing.
Well, do you wanna have your solicitor look at the law?
For the record, I, I'm conflicted out, you called me a year and a half ago.
I'm sorry?
You called me a year and a half ago.
Okay.
I'm conflicted out, I'm not giving them legal advice, I'm not giving you legal advice.
The only suggestion I would make would be to advise the chief to run the matter past the district attorney's office, he's the chief law enforcement officer of the county, he's a representative of the Commonwealth.
You ought to give a ruling that they have a right to a civil lawsuit, the residents.
I'll let, I'll discuss that matter with the chief and let him discuss it with the district attorney, we'll speak with him directly. That's my recommendation, that's my suggestion here. But I don't see where there's any, any standing for us as a board to take any action. We certainly can't tell the officer not to enforce the law. And if the district attorney says, "This is the law, and this is the way it's to be handled," then that's what we do.
If I may inject here, Landlord Tenant Act.
I'm sorry?
Landlord Tenant Acts, that has set up laws to protect tenants, or residents, you know, that lease or rent. Are you saying that these residents fall under this, the Landlord Tenant Act?
They fall under all the laws that I gave you, CFR, Code of Federal Regulations 42 and Pennsylvania Code 55. And I gave you a copy of Concora's own policy, which they must have in order to be licensed by the state of Pennsylvania, which states, which is in conformity to the law, access and visitation's rights. Do you have the right to receive or deny visitors? That's their right, it's not a suggestion, it is their right. So by your police coming out and telling me that I have to leave when I'm visiting my friends, you are violating their rights.
The police enforce the laws. The Crimes Code is chapter, title 18, that's what you were referring to there when you mentioned the defiant trespass notice. That is the law they are sworn to enforce. Outside of that, they can't take any action. They are governed by that, and the chief law enforcement officer of the county is the district attorney. So he is the one that can tell these officers to stand down, not a supervisor. He is the one to do that. And that's why I would make a recommendation that the chief discuss the matter with the district attorney, and go by his rules, his recommendation and suggestion. And I don't quite understand, outside of us, you asking us to have the officers stand down, I don't know what we can do for you. If you have a situation with a nursing home, then that's something for your attorney to take up with the nursing home. That's outside of our jurisdiction. But we certainly can't tell them to stand down, that would be inappropriate.
Well.
Because they're sworn to uphold the laws of the state of Pennsylvania.
And allow your officers to arrest you and then sue you.
Well, if that's what the district attorney advises.
No, that's what our attorney advised me.
Excuse me, sir? Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear your last statement, you were talking over me.
Our attorney said, "Go ahead and let them arrest you, I'll take it from there." So if you want to go that route, we're here, we're trying to make a meaningful settlement of this issue, you know, you're supposed to have your police officers onboard with elder care task, law task force, what are you doing? You're allowing them to violate their rights.
Sir, our, our police officers are sworn to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Then why don't they uphold the elder law? No answer.
What was the question?
I asked you why they don't uphold the law for the elderly, why are they allowed to violate their rights?
I don't know that they are.
I, I concur with, with your recommendation, is for Chief Pickles, if you would take this matter before the district attorney, and get some type of clarification and recommendation from the district attorney of Perry County.
I agree.
And hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have some type of clarification from the DA on how to properly deal with the situation. Thank you, sir.
May I add something to that?
Yes.
John Misch Turner's from the list.
Yeah, yeah, he's next.
If he takes that to the district attorney, alls he has really is the letter where we have evidence in addition to it, so it's like one-sided, and we would like to have the evidence presented, like, for we are here for the district attorney, would that be possible?
That would be something you would have to request from the district attorney, correct?
If we coordinate with Chief Pickles when he's gonna go there, that we could go with him?
I would recommend that, that you contact the district attorney on your own, and if he's willing to arrange the time for him to come together with you and with the chief, that would be up to the district attorney to entertain a joint meeting.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay? Last time I checked, I, I don't think I can tell the DA what to do. I'm sure he can tell me what to do. Okay, so let's see if we can come to some type of understanding through the DA, okay? All right, next?
Steve Bradney?
No.
Mr. Binner?
Nothing.
Bob Johnson?
Nothing.
Byron Warner?
Yes, fire company has submitted the federal grant, assistance firefighters grant to replace the tower truck, that was done by a grant writer this year, first year we didn't prepare it ourselves, getting to be too much. Responded to 11 emergencies during the snow, the snowstorm and aftermath of the storm from basically Friday night till overnight Saturday till Sunday evening. A lot of those were to assist EMS with getting them in and getting patients to the ambulances. There were some, there were some auto accidents and could've been a fire out Creek Road, gentleman's panel box had a problem. And the only other thing is, the Fire Protection Committee meeting, next one, the first one of 2016 will be February 23rd at 7:00 at the In-Town Firehouse.
So it's 7:00?
Yep.
What was that date again?
February 23rd.
Oh, yes. Thank you, sir.
Jenny, okay. Craig?
Trying to be brief. First is from the December 30th meeting, I sent some correspondence to Cece, and I copied a whole host of people on the October 4th, 2015 auto accident on Schoolhouse Road.
No, I didn't copy you yet, I was getting ready to do that.
Just some research that I did trying to get some data and information, and the end of the day, I'm not sure who may be to blame for what was left there, I don't believe it was our personnel, but I wasn't there, and, you know, there were, there were a lot of people on the scene, a lot of chaos when the items that were left there, so you got everything that I sent, and I said I copied the, the police department, the office.
Yeah, I just haven't copied them yet.
I think Mr. Landis, I don't have an email for Mr. Maguire, but I think Mr. Landis and Mr. Peters both got that as well. If there are any questions or anything further with that, please let us know. Obviously apologizing to East Pensboro as well, and I did include West Shore, Holy Spirit EMS, who provided the MICU, who we believe may have been the responsible party, and Susquehanna Township, who we don't believe were there, but were dispatched on the call. Second item is, moving forward into 2016, welcome back, Mr. Maguire, Mr. Peters, and welcome onboard, Mr. Landis. In my, one of my other hats, I have recently been appointed to the president position for the Borough Council, so I look forward to working with everybody, maintaining a relationship with, with Penn Township, certainly, we have a lot of overlap, we're all one community, and anything that happens in Penn certainly affects the borough as well as vice versa, so we look forward to working with the supervisors. Finally, we wanna thank, not quite finally, the Duncan Fire Company and the Buffalo Fire Company, as has been history for us for many, many years, when we have any kind of plowable snow, we request response of the, of the fire department, they typically have access to four-wheel drive, none of our ambulances are four-wheel drive, as well as snowmobiles and four-wheelers if needed, plus the manpower, whether we shovel a sidewalk, or shovel access to a garage, a front door, carry bags, keep equipment out of the wet snow, whatever the case may be, and just as a patient safety concern, a concern for our crews, as well as timeliness to get crews there, because no one's moving quickly in the snow. So we very much appreciate their support, as well as the Buffalo Fire Company's support, they did respond on all the one county had a hiccup, I guess, of the emergency calls from about 10:00 Saturday morning until 3:00 yesterday afternoon, we had the timeframe, just to make sure people had time to clean driveways and such. We're working on our year-end report for 2015, I usually have that completed by March, trying to tally some numbers from the county, from the 911 center. the 911 center, trying to compare them and sift through them with our reporting software. We did change our reporting software effective June 1 of 15, so there will certainly be some hiccup between January through May and then June 1 through the end of the year, just the way things are tabulated. It was our busiest year on record for emergencies. We had 1,331 dispatches. Of that, we handled probably about 1,000 emergency calls. With the increase in our transport volume, or not emergency volume, between wheelchair stretchers and basic life support transports, we've been able to also pick up more of the second calls, the second and third calls, because we've had more staff coming in and going out between transports. So our, our numbers are down at what we call a second do fail or second do miss call. We maintain a zero first do fail rate. We haven't failed a first do call since 2005. Again, the only agency in the county that can say that. So we're, we're very proud of that number, and that's done with, with a wide variety of volunteers and part-time employees. I did provide at the December meeting as well, a breakdown of our formula, how we come up with the part-time hourly rates and then the three salary, salary employees and their information. The only thing that we, again, maintain that we do not wish to present is the personal information for our employees, the identifiable personal information for those employees and who makes what. We, we don't pay them nearly enough. You know, our starting, our starting hourly rate's $9 and $10 an hour, and we had a couple cents on for each year of service. So we don't pay them nearly enough, and I think it's almost embarrassing if they would have to have that act, that information made public. A plea again for any consideration for a funding increase for this year. And before we get to our subscription time for May 1 through April 30 of 17, if there's any reconsideration or further consideration on the 15 allocation that was budgeted but not allocated or not, not paid, I know there was a motion, I believe, that this, at the November meeting, or no, I'm sorry, the October meeting, that fell without a second. As always, we appreciate your ongoing support as well as all of those in the room, and should there be anything you need from us, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, Craig, I guess I'm looking into that. Just to get some clarification, it was in the October meeting where there was discussion about the donation for Duncan and EMS. And as you said, that, that the motion failed with lack of support. With, checking with Helen, as in the 2016 budget, we do have it allocated for 2016, just not given yet.
Yes.
But with the 2015 allotment that we had put aside for, that money was never dispersed because we didn't agree to do that...
Correct.
...at the time. And my question is, just for clarification, and my understanding is that, that that 2015 line was not included, when I say that amount of money that was allotted was not absorbed into the 2016 budget?
No, it just never...
It just never got used?
It never got used, so it's never taken out of our liquid funds to be paid, so...
So it's still in the liquid funds, just never paid out?
Right. Technically, when a budget's, year is over, those line items not used just kind of disappear and we just still have the money.
The general fund just absorbs that money back in...
Yes, yes.
...because it was not allocated.
Correct.
Okay? Checking with PSATs and also checking with Mr. Oss House, that, that under, we are able to, if we choose to tonight, that we can still allocate, or still release that money, the 2015 budget money that we allotted. To Duncan?
It would show up in our audit as 2016.
So 2016 is going to show two donations?
Yes.
One for 15 and one for 16?
Yeah.
Okay, so within, so within the scope of what we're allowed to do, with that money still being there, I would like to make the emotion, I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and release the $15,000 from the 2015 budget to Duncan and EMS.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Or you want to have a moment for discussion, or?
No.
Okay. Aye, ayes have it. Any discussion?
Question. Is that a nay, Brian, or just silence?
Abstain.
Okay.
Okay, with one abstention.
Do we have to make a reason?
Yes. Abstention would need a reason placed in record. Okay. For abstention. Okay.
Then I vote nay.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. The assumption was changed to a nay. Motion passes. The allotment for 2015 will be, Helen, if you can get that out as soon as possible?
Do you want it with payroll next week, or do you want it at the end of February?
I would say let's go ahead and do it with payroll next week.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Thank you, it's helpful, helpful beyond words. And what I'll say, just in response to that very quickly, is that, that contribution buys the township a couple of things. It helps us to maintain 24/7 covered on ambulance, oftentimes for two ambulances, and our QRS to provide the emergency service to all of Penn Township. About 90% of Wheatfield Township, all of Duncan Borough, Watts Township in the Buffalo Borough, about 50% of Reed Township in Dolphin County. So that, that contribution goes a long way. If there's a specific allocation, if you want that to go to vehicle fuel, to vehicle maintenance, to insurance, to the mortgage, you know, we're happy to put it there, whatever, whatever your wishes are. That also essentially buys my presence for our issues, you know, or concerns, or anything that I can provide, you know, on a one monthly basis. I, I hit at least 10 of the 12 meetings each year and try to, try to be here for, for any feedback that you may have or that the residents may have. And finally, that also provides the discount or our subscription program, right, the subscription program that runs beginning May 1 for the residents in Penn Township that choose to purchase that.
Question for historically, the Board of Supervisors, have they ever put guidelines or for it to be dedicated to one particular place in the past?
The Penn Township has not for the EMS. I believe there was some direction for the Fire Company for fuel or something a few years ago.
Okay.
I know Wheatfield allocated some of the money for a standby generator for our station last year. In the past, they have, they have not, but it's all, it's certainly, you know, there's their direction wants to go, we're, you know, we've got plenty of expense at which to apply it, so we're glad to pull up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee?
One quick question. I, going back to the October, you discussed the donation for the EMS. I thought the thing that was shot down was to increase the donation.
No, that was in December. And at the December budget meeting... Let's see if I have Mr. Peters...
Doesn't matter, I just thought...
No, no, the October meeting was to release the donation, and then also then in the budget meeting, which was December 8, is where, was requested for an increase for the 2016 budget, and that failed to have an increase.
As a resident that had the opportunity to use their services three times last year, money well spent. They did a fantastic job.
Thank you, sir.
No.
Okay. Now who did I miss? Yep, you? No? I can't see who's back there. I think everyone's been... Gee, sir. Second row by Lee, okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Now they're on the agenda.
They're on the agenda. All right, let's move, move forward to invoice and expenditures.
Additional payments this month, we just paid for our first bill for salt. And we also paid our quarterly taxes.
Do we have a motion on the table to accept the invoice and expenditures?
I think the motion needs a motion to pay bills.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any that you have to exclude yourself from?
Yes, with the, well, that's on the vote.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye. Except that I abstained from voting on check number 029064 to Retsel Associates because I'm temporarily employed by them.
Okay, motion passes, bills get paid.
Okay. No, he just abstained on that one.
Okay, next we have the treasurer's report.
We did receive the, the payment from Duncan Borough for the police contract.
And we're in the middle of transferring that over to liget. So don't get panicked at that bottom number.
Okay. It's like, oh no.
Because if you look on the next one down, that's where it's at.
Correct. All right, do we have a motion to accept, do we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Subject to audit.
Subject to audit.
I make that motion to accept it.
Okay, motion was made. Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Treasurer's report?
There's a CD.
Yes, there's two CDs. First is a Park and Rec CD. It matures on February 10, and the Park and Rec Board has requested that it be invested at Landisburg. The Landisburg CD special for 35 months for 1.5%.
Do we have a motion to accept the Park and Rec CD renewal?
I knew that the Park and Rec CD be reinvested at the Landisburg Bank for 35 months. It's a CD special for 1.5%.
I second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.
Okay, also at the bottom of that sheet, there's another, a Capital Reserve CD that matures on February 5. I have all the rates listed there for you. I don't know if you want to invest it as the municipal easy access CD where we can withdraw money and not lose the interest. Or if you want to go with something like the Landisburg CD special, we're going at 1.5%.
And that's for 35 months?
Yes.
But we're locked into it?
Yes.
We're locked in. If we withdraw it early, we lose all interest.
And that easy access is for...
0.65.
It's 11 months.
11 months, correct.
I knew that the Capital Reserve CD be reinvested at the First National Bank of Mifflin Town Municipal Easy Access CD at 0.65% for 11 months.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the December 30, Board of Supervisors meeting notes, and then we also have the, the minutes of the reorganization meeting on January 4. The only, the only clarification that I'd like to make here, underneath recognition of visitors, we had a young lady speak that evening, Lisa Landis. Just to make it clear that what comments were made were not directed to myself or Supervisor McGuire that evening, so just for clarification there, that, that it was not directed to the other two supervisors, just for clarification. Do we have a motion to accept the December 30, Board of Supervisor minutes and January 4, 2016 reorganization?
I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the highway report. We are in the, in the situation here of hiring a operational...
Equipment operator.
Equipment operator for the road crew. I have two recommendations of individuals that, that I'd like to see for that position. By the way, we had, we had a tremendous response to the ads. We drew people all the way from Humblestown, Lewisberry, and all over the area here, all over Perry County, even as close as a quarter a mile away from the township building. But anyway, we had a tremendous response. I was very impressed. We had some that applied that had very little to no experience. Then we had some that were tremendously over experienced for the position, which I wouldn't mind seeing when we determine the roadmaster's position. Some of those that were overqualified would definitely be qualified for a roadmaster. So we got a good pull, not only for what we're looking for, but also a pull for future. So we've got some really positive things out of it. With that being said, there is two people that I'd like to recommend, and I would just go with last name, because nobody has repeated last names. There was a gentleman by the name of Livingston. Comes with a whole slew of credentials, meets all the qualifications that we're looking for. One of the biggest pluses that he has is that he is a equipment operator that knows how to plow. He actually has experience of plowing for a, a city department of about 165,000 residents. So he has experience on small streets, large streets, and things like that, so extreme, extreme qualifications there. And then the other individual I was looking at in my recommendation is Mr. Brennan, is Has a snowplow removal experience, also has, historically has a flagger, knowing how to do safety controls when we need them for road construction or closures or whatever we need to, he has that experience there. And the only other person that I, that I would recommend, last name is Everson. Again, he has his Class CDLA, which is more than what we require, but it meets the guidelines. And he also comes with... we require, but it meets the guidelines, and, uh, he also comes with, um- plow experience, um, lots of roads and, uh, and parking lots and things like that, and, um, so we have three qualified gentlemen, how the ones that I selected, I have, uh, the supervisors have somebody else that they'd like to recommend, if we can come to a conference out of the, uh, out of the four that I have picked. Any recommendations?
Brennan, Livingston, both, we knew, I liked them both.
Now Brian, um, I don't think you got to meet Mr. Livingston, because he was on Saturday-
That was the Saturday.
That was a Saturday.
Saturday morning.
Yeah, that was a Saturday, um, morning interview, so you didn't, you didn't have the opportunity to meet him.
I think I would go Livingston or Brennan, but that's just my take.
Did you say you recommended Livingston?
Brennan was great, he was good. Right there, one of the two, but I'd go with Livingston, I think.
Is that your motion?
I'd like to make a motion then, that we, uh, all hire, or make an offer of employment to Mr. Livingston.
I second that motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, ayes have it, Helen, if you would like to contact Mr. Livingston.
Okay, uh, wait.
Oh, yes, um, we had, um, got, um, PSATS puts out a, um-
Survey.
A survey on averages of what does it cost for these positions according to the size of your township and residents and stuff like that, um, so what we done is that we took some calculations, added them and divided them, and with that information given by PSATS, uh, the position will be hired at fifteen dollars an hour, and be a full-time physician with full benefits.
Okay, um, probation?
Uh, there would be a ninety day probation, at the end of the ninety days, there'll be an evaluation to determine if employment will continue or not.
Uh, being that he's, he has CDL?
Yes, he has a class A, he has a class A CDL.
Test?
What's that?
Pre-hire test?
Yes, we have to do the pre-employment drug testing, yeah, that's mandatory.
Mm-hmm, um, background check.
Yeah, um, that's just a standard employment, that's a patch from PSP.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And upon those conditions, he's a hire.
If he accepts, yes.
If he accepts.
If not, you'll be getting phone calls from me.
Yes, okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, Helen, you have down there about diesel fuel, I guess these are the bids that we need to be looking at?
Uh, yes, these are, well, like Co-Stars, um, the CPAC is a consortium that we've joined for a number of years, and then we have Co-Stars, uh, the biodiesel, I, what I really need tonight is, okay, to go ahead and put our numbers in, uh, Brian's talked to Henry about what it is, and he suggests we stay at what we did before.
Okay, so you're working with Henry on that, Brian?
I talked to him about it, yes.
Okay, so, um, we're looking at the biodiesel, going in for another, I'm looking here, four thousand, uh, the gasoline for the police department, we're looking at six thousand, the chief agreed with that, heating oil for the garage is, uh, eight hundred gallons, if you guys are agreeable to that, and then Co-Stars, uh, we've been asking for eighty tons of salt.
How much?
Eighty tons, that's normally held us in good, with that, with the Co-Stars, uh, contract, you have to get within the year sixty percent.
We have to use sixty percent.
We have to buy sixty percent, but we can go over as high as a hundred and forty percent for this, in case it happens, it's only happened once, um, what they're asking this year, different from the previous years, is they want an amount, an estimated amount of required salt that we would use, want between August and October to replenish what we use this winter season, and then they want another number for during the winter season, I was thinking twenty, which was about one tri, one triaxal load during the summer, because we always stock up.
Correct.
Before the last winter storm, and then-
And that counts towards our sixty percent?
Yes, and then the, and the other sixty percent, sixty tons would be during the winter season.
Correct.
When we know if we need or not, that's what I would suggest without that thing. This contract will be from, let's see, what is it, from, it's from August to July, so we have for this contract that we're in now until July to get everything, which I don't think has been a problem, actually Morton Salt, who we have it with now, did really good on delivery.
And, um, when we were looking for contracts, um, for possible snow removal, I was going around and talking to other townships, municipalities, and we actually got a, a much better deal on our salt than they did.
They must not go through the consortium, and if they, and if any of those municipalities wants the information, I'll give them, at least it's email and all.
Correct, okay.
Because they have been very nice with, not the, well, the salt's from Co-Stars, they should be able to get it from Co-Stars.
And then one thing I'd, I'd like to make a statement here, since we're on the highway report, um, that we did have many of our neighbors, um, Watts, um, no, not Watts, Marysville and Duncaner, um, both had made contact stating that, um, if we needed help with any snow removal or anything, that they would, uh, more than willing to, um, step up and give us a hand if needed, so, um, I just want to thank our neighbors to the south of us, Marysville, and thank you, uh, to Duncaner, um, for putting that offer out there to us. We could handle the eight to twelve, when they changed it to, when they kept changing it and nobody knew after a while, um, you know, it got scary there for a while, but, um, anyway, I just want to thank our neighbors, uh, for reaching out to us.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
On the diesel fuel, I had asked, uh, at the reorganization meeting when we discussed about the amount of diesel fuel would be provided to the fire company, um, I believe we had the same, um, information for the, through the fire company, that we had been getting fuel for our generator at the township station, off-road diesel, uh, it come back this year, it was two, two third, or two twenty something a gallon, we paid a dollar thirty-nine a gallon from Swenson's to get the tank filled up.
How much did you spend?
Dollar thirty-nine a gallon.
That's probably because, uh, we're locked into whatever price we have with this.
Well, see, we, we paid, we, you paid like two dollars or something to be in that, that fuel deal, but the price of fuel's dropping so fast-
Yeah.
-that they, they aren't, their bids were done probably last year sometime, and I'm not saying you're going to pay a dollar thirty-nine a gallon for diesel, for diesel fuel over the road fuel, but it might be an option, instead of locking yourself into that, because like I said, the prices are dropping, I wouldn't think you'd want to lock yourself into a diesel fuel deal for, for a long period of time, I don't know how you, how you have to conduct your business like that, but when I, when they said, and we got it for fuel oil also from Swenson's, dollar, in the firehouse, dollar thirty-nine a gallon, and that's dirt cheap, and I, I didn't even hear it being that low until then, don't know if they cut us a break because of the fire company or what, but it's still way less than two twenty something a gallon, that's almost, you know, eighty some, ninety cents a gallon.
Correct, um, would they lock us into a-
I, I have no idea.
I can check.
I don't know.
If you can check, because, um, just my thought here is, and I'm not a doomsday person, but if you're looking at the Middle East, it's a hotspot, and something could kick off at any time, and next thing you know, they took hold, um, of the fuel, and-
I mean, I think you would have to, with that diesel fuel deal with the, who, I forget, it was-
CPAC.
Yeah, um, I, you, you tell them how many gallons you want, but-
And then they go out for the bids, and tell us what they get.
But you actually have to place the order for the fuel, right?
To be delivered, yes.
Yes, so even though you're, you're, you belong to that, at that two dollars or whatever you pay to be in it, and then you have to request the oil, the, the fuel be released, there are a lot of you that much fuel.
Correct.
That doesn't mean, uh, according, you know, what, from what I'm thinking of, or what I know about it, and what we've dealt with, that doesn't mean you have to purchase that amount of fuel from them.
No, it's sixty percent.
Okay, but we are locked in, we are locked in at that-
Yeah, and realize that-
But we can go outside of that, because we're not required.
Oh, yeah, no.
So we can, we can go in and get a contract-
With someone else.
With someone else, but still use, um, Swanson's as needed, um, Swanson's, right?
Swenson's.
Swenson's, I know who he meant.
We can still use them as needed, and then when the price gets jacked up, then we can go back to the contract and get from them with the locked-in price.
Yeah, and understand the two twenty we got locked in was last year.
Right, exactly, so it might be-
We got the same, we got the same thing, and I even sent her an email back, I said, you know, we, we just purchased fuel for, you know, significantly less, I didn't even go into detail, but I said, well, Brian won't be taking it, you know, taking advantage of your fuel this year, because we got it, you know, significantly cheaper.
Okay, so you work closely with Brian on this and everything else, okay?
Yeah, that, and that would be off-road diesel, so, for the generator, but the fuel oil price and the off-road diesel were no different, there, there's probably going to be a little bit of difference in, over the road diesel, but I wouldn't think it'd be eighty cents, eighty cents.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be, we just won't know until they bring back the-
Until they come back with the price.
Mm-hmm, but no, I can check with-
Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead with this, with the CPAC or not? All we're doing is telling them how much we want.
Oh, yeah, we still want to, we still want to, yes, right, we still want to get the information from them, yeah, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay, and then what's this?
Have we gone on motions?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah?
No.
Not yet.
Okay, so, so the motion is to-
Allow me to send the information into CPAC and Co-Stars.
Okay, make the motion that Helen sends in information to CPAC and Co-Star, referencing to the fuel.
Fuel and salt.
And salt.
Can you add the numbers, do you want me to state the numbers?
No, I got the numbers.
I said in the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, ayes have it, motion passes.
And to check with Swenson.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll call Jim.
If we could save a dime.
Okay, yeah, those little dimes add up.
Okay, Penn Township Planning Commission?
Yes, yep.
Yes.
Yes, uh, this is the Meladenhoff and Sanderson final subdivision plan, and Joe's up.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, how are you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. Better since the white stuff's not flying out out there anymore, um, pretty simple plan, um, you're all very familiar with the Meladenhoff property, um, one of the neighbors, um, Chris and Candice Sanderson, uh, is one of the owners that uses the right-of-way, um, here's rough road, the right-of-way comes up here, Chris and Candice is the last one other than Meladenhoff's that, that use this private drive, they currently have six point six four acres, this is their dwelling, their driveway comes out to the common private right-of-way, this dash line is their current property line to the north, uh, what they were thinking of doing is adding land to get clean and green values, uh, so they can get enough for ten acres to put this all in clean and green, so they're going to get a rectangular portion up here, about four, about five and a half acres, that'll be added to their existing tract, has a lot to add on, so Meladenhoff's property will get smaller, will be reduced down to just under eleven and a half acres, this is simply a lot addition, no improvement, um, that's it. Planning Commission recommended approval conditional to, uh, me adding some notes on the cover sheet, um, there was a reference to, um, you know, that there was restriction on the Meladenhoff property that any improvements would have to be, like, so modern, I would have to come back through the board, back through the township, which is a condition to this property, um, I had that condition listed on the plan as being lot one, which technically it should have been lot one A and lot one, because that's, this was the Meladenhoff property, so I've added that to the cover sheet, that is the Planning Commission recommended, that was the only thing that they had, um, asked me to do, there's still some things that I need to put on the plan, um, source of title information, because we sort of got a plan in the loop here, that hasn't been recorded yet, which was the prior Meladenhoff plan, I believe she's going to take care of that next week.
Tuesday at the latest.
Tuesday at the latest, so as soon as it gets recorded, I'll have the, and then I got to do deeds for this, and all that information will be updated on this plan.
Okay.
So this is the current information as per that, I've got to reference the, the right-of-way agreement that was, that was done by all the owners, I'm going to reference that on the plan, so that's stuff that I need to do, which I don't have any information to do yet, but stuff that I know that I have to do yet, so.
And those are the point one, two, three, four, and five.
Well, he's talking, um, number one, number two would be, uh, contingencies, did you, on lot number one, the owner information would have revised?
That's, I, I can't.
You can't do that yet?
I can't do that.
Okay, so three?
Yep.
But it's on here, saying it has to be done.
Yes, uh, note ten, did you put in both lot one and lot one A?
Yep, that's what I just said about.
Okay, and note nine, uh, from the, that plan, is on to this one, uh, the maintenance drive, of the driveway within the access, he's meant of lot one and two shall be-
Yeah, as per recorded, that's what I need to put on once we record that piece with.
Okay.
Yep.
So one, two, three, and five, is what's contingent.
Okay, and you're in agreement to all those?
I do accept those, yes.
Okay.
You're asking for a couple of AORs for them?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple of them.
The standards, the map scale, plan scale, preliminary plan.
Yeah.
Now, do you want the AORs done separately?
AORs first, yeah.
Okay, all right, do you want to take care of that, Brian?
Sure.
They have their own voice.
I'm not going to include the, the name of the plan in the motion, okay?
No, 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 no.
I move that we approve the AOR for section three oh nine dot A dot A plan scale of the subdivision land development ordinance.
Mm-hmm, three oh nine A seven.
And part of the motion, we also approve the AOR for section three oh nine dot A dot seven, map scale.
And the three oh six for the preliminary plan, this should be at the top.
Oh, and also AOR for section three oh six, preliminary plan procedure.
All right, do we have a second on that motion?
Second to motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, ayes have it, motion passes, then we have to do a motion on the plan itself.
Mm-hmm, with contingencies, one, two, three, and five, and all fees.
I move that, uh, we approve the Randy L. and Julia Meladenoff and Chris A. and Candice M. Sanderson final subdivision plan file number two oh one six dash zero one, condition upon the landowner signing the plan and certifying title of property being subdivided, condition upon the maintenance agreement considering the shared right-of-way access drive beginning of rough, rough road be recorded, condition upon, on lot one, the owner information shall be revised to reflect the block prior plan approved, and condition upon note nine from the Randy L. and Julia Meladenoff plan being placed on this plan, shall I read the notes?
No.
That's the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, who's second?
Thank you very much.
Who's second?
Did you second? Yeah, Joe seconded.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And all fees paid.
And all fees paid.
Yeah, he agreed, he agreed.
Glad you blew over the whole thing again?
No, we're good, thanks again, see ya.
Okay, next, let's move on here, we have, um, zoning report, there is none?
Uh, no, you do have a zoning report, um, he did a, oh, he did a site visit to Lighter Lane, uh, the ward property spent, and the linker letter, that's coming up later.
Okay, anything we have to address, honey?
Um, well, we have the letter under old business that Lenny drafted.
And it was for the linker property?
Yes, and he talked with, uh, Ron Eberts at DEP, and I believe with you. Yes, and he talked with Ron Eberts at DEP, and I believe with you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and discuss that then, underneath the new business?
Now or then? So do you?
We just wanna take care of announcements we're hearing on it?
Sure.
He's asking if there's, if this letter's okay with you gentlemen before he sends it out.
And this is the recommendation that came from both?
DEP, and after he talked to DEP, he talked with Mark.
Uh, for record here, we're discussing the Lanker property, which is the, uh, the site just across from the T Room on 11 and 15 that has some large piles of rocks. There was a, um, a cease and desist order on the property. But in that timeframe of that, before that happening, there was a pile of rocks that grew larger and larger and, uh, is, is now in violation of ordinances here in the township. We've gotten a place to a resolution here to get that pile reduced, and that's what's here before us today. So just, we just gotta make a motion to accept, um, these conditions, and, uh, and this was, is Mr. Lanker aware of any of this yet, or no?
No, not yet.
Okay, these are the conditions that we're going to place, um, for him to be able to come in compliance.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the, uh, it's called enforcement notice. So, uh, I like, well, any, uh, Mark, anything, everything looks copastatic here, everything looks pretty much?
Yeah, Lenny and I talked about this letter this morning before he drafted it.
Okay.
The only comment I had in that letter was making sure that Mr. Lanker was aware that DEP had provided an, a exception to their cease and desist, so that he could move those rocks. And Lenny spoke with DEP, and they advised that they were going to mail Mr. Lanker his letter directly. And so that letter would be consistent with the same letter that we received. So Mr. Lanker would receive a letter from DEP, and our requirements would mirror that letter. So he'll have notice from both of us that, here's the way that you're going, that we want you to go about resolving the zoning violation.
Okay, how does this affect our cease and desist for Mr. Lanker?
Your cease and desist for Mr. Lanker would be by law, if you're telling him move it, you can't have a cease and desist.
Okay.
So you're saying, here's how you do it within this limit, but you can't continue on with anything else.
Okay.
You're giving him an exception by this letter to, to abate those issues addressed specifically in the letter.
Okay.
Okay. And are we gonna obtain that letter from DEP first, or it's just good enough that we got their word?
Well, we have a written letter from them already.
Oh, you do?
We have an email from them. I'm gonna call it out, we have an email from them, and it's signed, and it, and there was some back and forth on it.
Okay.
Um, and so I'm fine with that. Um, I have a copy of it, in fact, Lenny gave me a copy of that this morning also.
Okay.
I read through the letter. Um, so we're fine with DEP telling us directly, we're the one who made the inquiry. Can you help us with this, so we can get this under, and they reviewed everything, we sent them all the information, the ordinance, everything, and they wrote back with their determination that yes, he can have permission to do this, to review the pile.
They're, they're then going to send them a, a letter directly. Okay.
Then our cease and desist, do we have to, our cease and desist concerned him using the property for commercial uses. Do we have to do anything with our cease and desist?
No, that stays in place.
Okay.
These are conditions within it to be able to remove the pile, but he's not allowed to do any further, he's not open up for business.
No, I just wanna be clear.
Yeah.
Right, that's right. Nothing in our letter's giving him any ability to do anything commercially.
Okay.
What you're saying, whatever you're doing there, it has gotta be in zoning compliance with height.
Okay.
So everything remains with the exception of...
This little...
Is that what you're motion to approve this letter?
Yes.
I move we approve the letter that came from Lanker from Madden Engineering Services Incorporated.
And which is the enforcement notice?
Yes.
Okay. I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion passes.
Helen, did you, excuse me, did you say the other one was for the Ward property fence?
Yeah, that's a different subject, but yeah, uh, for...
So there is action on that property?
You talked to him about that, what's the last, latest thing on the Ward property fence?
There's action, there's nothing, there's no new action on the property.
We took more pictures, um, he wants the copies, uh, he's definitely in violation of the fence being...
Among other issues?
Yeah.
Right, so nothing's been done on those yet. The pictures came in last week, we're working on a response to it, letter from his council.
Thank you.
Okay. There is no SEO report.
Okay, Pen Township Park and Rec Board report?
You have my report, and I do not have anything receiving.
Okay, thank you, Karen. All right, moving forward, uh, Pen Township Municipal Authority, PA-1 call?
Yes, I sent them as, with Sam Ochs retiring, uh, I sent the authority a letter asking who was gonna do the PA-1 calls for their section, portion of it. Um, and this is the response I got back. Right now, Sam was doing all PA-1 calls for both our side and their side, and he's doing that until the end of the month. After that, guess it's gonna roll downhill for a while.
This question came up sometime back, and that's...
Yeah, and I've been, we've been, they've been working on it too, and trying to find this out and all. For our side, before Sam would do for both sides, the call, PA-1 call would come in, I'd give it to whoever was on the, the authority's side, and our side would go to the highway department, and they would both tell me if it's clear, marked, whatever, and then I'd call it in. Sam was very kindly doing it for both of us. Now we gotta figure out what, who's gonna do it. I'm assuming, once the gentleman's on duty, that our guy would be able to do it for us. Our roadmaster, the people down in the highway.
Okay. Are you talking about the operational or the roadmaster, when we get him?
Probably the roadmaster eventually, but if the operational can do it, if not, I've done it before in an emergency.
Well, I would recommend at this point here to that person's on board
Mm-hmm.
um, that you continue
Okay.
to do those, and then, um, um, at that time, we'll discuss whether or not if he's ready to do those PA-1 calls,
Yeah.
and he's qualified to be able to make these determinations.
Yeah. Well, basically, they call in and say they're gonna dig here, and we just mark if it's, something's there. With the authority's side, I, I know which streets they have stuff on, so if it affects the authority, I go down and look at their maps with help.
We have been conducting a couple of interviews also for, um, several items
Mm-hmm.
that are needing some attention, PA-1 calls being one of them.
Okay.
So I know they've not exhausted their list of possibilities, but they're in the process.
Some might be short-term.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Any questions from you gentlemen? Okay, um, we're gonna have to make that a motion, right, we're just...
It'll roll downhill and stuff at the desk.
All right. Uh, let's move on to the secretary's report.
Okay, the Park and Rec Board changed their chicken barbecue date to April 9th. At, during the, uh, reorganizational meeting, you got, gentlemen, it said to do the roadmaster survey on the 19th, which was the date we had at that point. My question to you is, do you want to keep it the March 19th, or do you want to do it in conjunction, in conjunction with the barbecue on April 9th?
And, um, the roadmaster meeting is basically the road survey?
Yeah. Get to drive around.
Your thoughts, gentlemen?
Makes no difference.
Makes no difference.
You guys would like to set it up?
Well, historically, it's always been done with the chicken barbecue, um, and there's events that take place around that. My recommendation, um, with, that, excuse me, that we go ahead and, um, keep it in historically with the chicken barbecue, um, and switch it to, for this year, April 9th, 2016.
Okay.
Does that appear motion, or just agreeable?
Just agree to it.
Okay.
I just need to know to advertise it.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Um, the second thing I have is the trash ordinances that you asked me to look for. I, PSAT's had only two, and they're not really just where you put your trash or how to put it out. I marked on those two ordinances the portion that we were interested in on times and all that. Look at it, let me know what you think, if we need to draft something up.
Um, have you reached out to Don Cannon to see if they have any trash?
Not yet.
And I would, um, I probably would reach out to maybe...
Rye and Wheatfield?
Yeah, Wat Rye and Wheatville, and maybe the Mary's Mall Borough, just to see what they have.
Okay.
And if we can get a consideration.
Can do that.
Does Mark has any idea? What's the goal?
Uh, we had a complaint about when people can put their trash out for pickup. Lady requested that we set a time that they can't be out before, say, 6:00 PM the night before.
They're putting it out days before.
Right. Just leaving it there.
Dillsburg Borough and North Middleton Township both have ordinances that address those issues, uh, for the same reasons. Um, and the reason, um, you have a designated trash day, uh, in North Middleton, it's a township, uh, but there's lots of development.
Good.
It's like, it's, it's kinda like a, a city when you get into the development, so to speak. You have the designated trash day, they're having the same problem, especially in the summertime. And so they, they developed an ordinance that essentially said no more than, whatever, 48 hours prior, or 24 hours prior, and, um, in the event something's not picked up, oftentimes people will put out more bags than allow, trash that's not allowed to be picked up. That has to be removed within the same period afterwards. So it gave it a very closed period. Now, the problem with both those ordinances, uh, and I don't know that you have that problem, but one of the problems that North Middleton has is different areas of the township get picked up at different times.
We have something like that.
So the problem is with enforcement knowing whose trash gets picked up when, so that you can start the time clock. Number two problem with enforcement is, in order to actually do more than give someone a reminder, warning, someone's gotta go out and take pictures of the trash being there, and say, it was there here. The two hours passed, or we're three days ahead of time, and you're a Thursday, here it is on Monday. I went back later today, it was still there, you just didn't have it sitting there for 15 minutes, that's a good excuse, or a good defense. And so you have a lot of enforcement time on that issue also. Um, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't work for habitual offenders, or people that are just doing it, you can catch those ones, but it's certainly not an ordinance that's going to be able to be enforced the first time. And so what the board needs to do, and it has an ordinance like that, is it has to realize that enforcement is generally going to start with education, move on to warnings, and then the board decides how much time they wanna send the police department or anyone else in the township out to take pictures of trash on the curb. That's the issue with the ordinance, but they do have them. They haven't repealed them, and they face these issues forever, but they haven't repealed them yet.
Now, Chief, you have to be worried if we send you out with a truck, 'cause that means you're doing removal, too.
So I, I can certainly, um, if the board wants to look at those ordinances, help Helen compile some, some options. If she's, if she's unable to find, you know, she may find all the other ones have them, good enough. I think they're all pretty much standard, same, so.
Yeah, and the thing about it is, is that are we creating another, are we creating something bigger? Has it been an issue in the township, you know, and I, I know the times that I've been coming here, prior to being a supervisor, this is the first time I've ever, this is the first time I heard, except with people leaving their trash out on the bags out on...
Delville.
Delville, okay, which I haven't heard anything lately.
No, that's...
I haven't seen anything really, so.
That's, that's been cured, yes.
Okay, so, you know, and it took some time doing that, but
A lot.
a lot of time. So I don't know, like, creating an ordinance, if we're going to create more problems? Do we just send a letter to the individual just saying that there was a concern, would you please be more considerate in putting your trash out? Because they might be a truck driver, and they, they leave on, and then their trash comes on Thursday. I don't know what the situation is.
You guys have been out there, not me.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
But it seems like it's an ongoing problem.
Well, yeah, 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 sure. Different area, yeah.
Do we at least wanna see what these ordinances look like and determine when that, the federal township? Okay, if you can gather more information. Yes, sir?
The, the borough, and I, I don't remember honestly if it's ordinance or if it's any utility policy, like a, like a trash policy, but it's a 24-hour prior to pickup. The borough doing its own pickup, it's much easier to know when that timeframe is.
Correct.
Um, and I know dumpsters, and there's not just one pickup day, but the majority of pickups typically Wednesday morning, so this means Tuesday morning is when the trash should go out at the earliest, so I think the 24-hour rule, as Mark indicated, is probably pretty, pretty standard.
Do we have any idea of how the township's flood up for trash removal?
We have three carriers that come in. I know Savester's picks up on Mondays and Tuesdays, depending on where they're going. CCD is Thursday, why is it Thursday, it's done like that?
It is Wednesday.
Wednesday?
But do they, do they have different areas, though, where they pick up different days?
Yeah, they do.
So we would have to get maps from each of those.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a trashy problem, isn't it?
Yes.
They're different color bags.
Always getting dumped on.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to find out when they go to what area on what days, and C C, CDC picks up the bags, and Waste Management, I think, only comes as far as Perdix, this side of Perdix.
No, Waste Management doesn't like that one.
Do they?
Yeah, they get, they get on the manager.
They've changed. On their calls.
If we could just compile the information, then we can have some knowledge.
Yeah.
Ryan, along those lines, has our township ever had a contract with one hauler?
Not since I've been here.
Yeah, we got guys coming and going, you have three or four of them.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, but no, I haven't, since 11 years I've been here now, it's always been individuals get to pick who they want.
I know when, I lived in South Middleton Township back in, oh, the early 90s and through 2003. At first, we did have our own, you could select your own, and then the township did come in and make an ordinance that gets one. And the thing about it is, actually, it was a whole lot cheaper.
Yeah, they can give you better rates.
It was a whole lot cheaper, except for the individual, individual that may only have one bag of trash a week.
Yeah.
But usually, they made a plan for that, where they would buy the bags, and that would be their situation there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, more affordable that way. I don't know if it's the, the board, that we wanna even consider that down the road. I think that there's a lot of things on our plate right now to consider, you know, going with one trash company. But it's something we can look at down the road. We can think about it. What do you think, Joe?
Let's think about it.
Let's think about it.
And I have another question, too. On, um, Faculty Road, is there, the individuals can put out their own trash in their, their bags.
Mm-hmm.
There is a pole, right at the, where our, our road goes in, there's a telephone pole that trash bags many times sit there for the whole week, until the next week.
I bet they're the yellow ones, right?
Yeah, they are. And there are numerous critters that manage to spread that all over the place, and I'm just wondering, is that a designated pickup spot? Cause...
We don't designate pickup spots.
I just wondered if that was one, since Delville wasn't one.
FBI caller, six, seven.
Yeah, we'd have to check with CDC.
Maybe they wouldn't come up to man, I gotta take ours down the industry, man.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it, it probably is from somebody that they won't come to their place.
Yeah.
Whatever, but I, I just wonder, 'cause I know the last two weeks has been okay, but the one week, it was there the whole week, till the next Monday.
That's when he comes into play.
That's when we pick them up, Karen goes through them.
We'd have to rename you Oscar.
No, that's her, no, Karen's left, that's Karen.
Okay. All right, um, so Helen's just going to gather some, compile some information for us and, and, um, we'll go from there on that, all right? Trustees and insurance retirement?
Okay, they are, there's new governmental stand, accounting standards called Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight for pension programs. What they are asking us are, are we going to request compliance reports for these? The only problem with that is it costs five hundred dollars for each of those reports per year. So I talked to our C P A to ask if we even needed it. And according to Erin, we're exempt because we're a modified cash, cash basis accounting. So we are therefore exempt from the reports. So she says we do not need to buy, to pay for that. Because of these nice news little accounting changes, our audit will change in appearance a little for the pensions. I gave you the copies from the twenty-fourteen on the pages.
Yes.
The statement of fiduciary net position for both pensions will stay the same, but the note for the pension plans will change. The first preliminary introduction paragraph of Note Seven, they'll keep it, but they'll tweak it to comply. They will take off two graphs that don't apply, will not apply anymore to us, but they will keep the third graph, which tells how much is, it was in there, uh, the assets investment, the net assets, how much was contributed, how much is investment income, the deductions, and the net asset as of the first of the year and the end of the year. But for what we need to decide is, one, do we want these reports?
Have we gotten them in the past?
No, we've never had to get them in the past. And Erin says we don't need them now because of the modified cash basis of accounting. If we ever went to, I don't even know what they call it, a full-
Full.
Accrual, thank you. Accrual accounting, then yeah, we'll have to get them.
And what's the difference, just for education, what's the difference between the two, or is it too lengthy?
Accrual is a lot more strict, whereas the modified cash, we've got money coming in, we've got more than going out, they just do the reports on everything on that. Very simplistic explanation. You have to be an accountant to read the accrual.
Well, I would say with history as it was, is that we've never had to have it in the past.
Yeah.
And our auditor is saying that we don't need it now.
Yeah.
My recommendation is for us to not do it and not change anything.
Good.
Do we have to make a motion on that, or?
Well, the motion requires we're not changing.
No, no.
No, okay.
No, I just needed to know how to answer that and get the report they were asking me for. The only thing I also have is F Y I, uh, open records, uh, numbers for the last year on how many we received, how much it cost us that we don't get money reimbursed for, and all that good stuff. And I gave you a listing of the Humane Society's, what we spent last year. We still have a good balance that, whereas we, so we didn't have to pay more than the two fifty contract for this year. So depending on how many cats and dogs go in, we may not have to pay anything extra next year either.
We're usually good at finding homes for, Chinese restaurants? We've already found-
That's only the cats.
Two cats and three birds, homeless or anything.
What I did with the three cats was dropped off at my house.
And the birds were dropped off too.
And we made a mistake by feeding them, now they stay.
They're yours.
Uh, they're, yes. They won't come to me, but they'll take my food. Sounds like a kid.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that's it for the secretary's report. Onto, um-
Engineer.
The engineer report.
He didn't have anything.
We don't have anything. Max was asked if he could be excused this evening, um, because he, one, he didn't have anything, and number two, he had an, an appointment with his granddaughter.
Had to pick her up.
Never turn down your granddaughter. All right, uh, police report.
We have a breakdown in officer activity for December, and this year's-
How much am I making?
... were received, yeah? We're still working on our paperwork for our new hires, since none of them ever had M O P E C cards before, so there's quite a bit of paperwork and quite a lengthy time before they finally get their, their M O P E C numbers and when they're able to actually issue citations and everything.
But all the recent new hires in December were all on board and?
That's, yeah, we're doing the paperwork and stuff, though.
Oh, so they can't actually serve until the M O P E C's done?
No, no. They, well, they learn the area and stuff.
Okay.
They just have to be with another officer so they can use their M O P E C number whenever if anything's issued.
Any questions for the chief?
No, I'll see.
I gotta ask, didn't we get paid?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Did that officer get paid?
I have the checks to be signed tonight.
To be signed tonight. He's probably out here waiting.
How much did he get paid?
Couldn't afford to get gas.
We got a seven hundred and fifty dollar check.
Okay.
Have we done that, where else have we done that at then?
School.
You mean that particular or just extra jobs?
Extra jobs.
We've been out in No Acres, uh, when their systems go down or if there's, if they have problems, we, they, they work out there over the nights, a couple nights too. You know, we down at the high school for games and stuff like that. Or any meetings that people think there's going to be a problem, they'll, they'll bring on an extra officer, yeah.
The township police department does private hire work for a business in Wheatfield Township? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It's not the, they're, they're, they're hiring our officers off duty.
Oh.
And they go through us, yeah, so.
But, so they're not?
They're not, no, they're not there as, as, like, in uniform.
So it has nothing to do with the township, really?
Well, it goes through, it goes through us because they, they get, they get hired through us and get paid through us.
But they're there off duty?
Right.
And they're getting a check from us.
Right.
Insurance covers that exposure?
In a municipal agreement.
But it's not a municipality, it's, it's a private business.
Coming through us, though. Yeah, we're, we're, they're, they're covered under our working comp just like fire police. Fire police aren't ours, we approve their activity, and we cover them on their workers' comp, if they're municipal fire police.
That implies that, that the township approved those activities.
Well, I'm sure if the township didn't, they wouldn't be there.
Our reserve comment.
Yeah, but if you didn't, arguably speaking, if the township's going to pay your officers, the board of supervisors should be approving the activities of the offers, officers where payment's coming through us. Whether you do or don't, or did or didn't, I don't know. Tonight's my first night. But I'll give you an example, North Middleton Township police officers often work Carlisle events, car shows. But it is with the consent of the board of supervisors, and it is with the oversight of Chief Reeds, who's the chief down there, as to be sure that there is coverage within the township for the police department necessary, and that the police are acting within what I'm going to call the scope of conduct of what they would want someone who was under their badge, so to speak, to look like. So even in when a police officer's off duty, they've got a code of conduct to follow, so to speak, just like I do. You wouldn't want, see pictures of me plastered on the news, you know? Whatever, doing whatever, you have a code of conduct and, and, but the board should be approving those activities and understanding where if the check's coming through us, then we need to approve those.
Okay, historically, to my knowledge, I hasn't, I have never, not been aware of anything in the past. My recommendation to the board is that, that before we enter into any such agreement, that the board of supervisors are made aware of it, and you can do it through the liaison.
That's what we've always done.
Okay, unfortunately, it never got to us. Okay.
So my, my guess was that somebody on the board knew that was happening, so to speak, and so that's just, I think that's just a communication thing. And again, it's not necessarily, um, the board as an employer has the ability to set a policy as to if you're going to have officers with, I'm not going to say our badges on, but certainly they're using their employment as a police officer for this township, their M O P E C cards, et cetera, in doing that off-duty work, you do have some say in what they could do. You can exaggerate examples of what an off, what an off-duty police officer could do for security, and some of them you would, you would just not want to hear that an officer was doing, and some of them are perfectly great because they're helping Duncan and Borough with the parade, or they're helping the fire company with a, with a fire event. So again, they should be approved, the board should be aware of what's happening. If, if the check's coming through us, obviously, whatever else they do in their own time that it's not being paid to us and we're paying them, when it's between them and someone ten ninety-nining them, that's, that's their business.
But if they're using our equipment, it should be something that this board knows about.
If they're using our equipment, that's right, but if they're going down and not taking their service revolvers, our vehicles, and things like that, that's right, then they can do what they want. With their, with their certification, with their one thirty-five, whatever.
And access through the Commonwealth Law Enforcement System Network, the Clean System, and the National Crime Information Center, the N C I C system, I would think would only be in the function of a police officer, not, not to run security and make a body shot.
Sure, but if they're, but let's be practical, if they're running security, they're going to call in a police officer.
Sure.
Because they can't make an arrest running security, and that police officer's going to run that information.
Right, right, and that's, that's within, I think, the law. I don't think that any security has that access.
Right, that's right.
Okay, um-
I got a question.
Well, if they're, if they're doing something privately.
Correct, exactly.
That, that would have to go through two thirty-five, that would be separate, they wouldn't be working as a police officer.
Problem is the money's passing into us.
Yeah, and now if they're coming through us, yes.
Right, that's, that's the only thing-
Then they're, then they're working under the authority of-
That's right, and that's what, and that's what, and I think that's what the question is. What they're doing on their off-duty time, it's not under our badge, not using our equipment, not accessing our, our N C I system, is their business to an extent.
All right, Joe, if you want to go ahead and work with two pickles on that and entertain, okay?
Take care.
Thank you. Anything else?
You had another question, Lee?
Well, I did, but I think it just got answered. I think Joe answered it. My question was going to be, are they able to make an arrest if they're out there in a different jurisdiction? And so, okay.
No, not in their work in security, they have to call in a, a jurisdictional officer to make that arrest.
But are they lawfully allowed to detain?
All security is lawfully allowed to detain.
Okay.
They're not allowed to make an arrest.
Correct, okay.
The department store security man has, within an extent, the ability to detain until an arresting officer arrives.
Okay, any further questions on that? Yes, sir?
The only thing I would recommend is you should have a policy that says, okay, if you're going to do outside work, is what type of work is going to be authorized to be done? If it's working at business X, Y, and Z, but not A, B, and C, which could be strip clubs, something like that. The thing is, it's the officers of the township. Wherever they may or may not be working at, it represents a township, and I don't think that you want to find out later on that, hey, they're working at this business, and it gives the image not in a positive career.
Okay, Joe's going to work with the, on that policy and-
If I may make a recommendation, I don't think you ever find a policy where you can list do's and don'ts. Your policy needs to be that outside work needs to be approved by, something like that, so that they're coming to you explaining or giving you a written, you know, we'd like permission to work this event, and you can either approve that in bulk at the beginning of the year if they know what they are, or one at a time, because as soon as you make a list of five things they can't do, the sixth one's not on the list. And the answer is, you didn't say couldn't do that. So you'll never be able to make a definitive list of what you can and can't do, but because you're the supervisors and you have the ability to approve or disapprove, um-
If, if I may, I, I believe that you can, and what I'm getting at is in a sense of, for example, the strip clubs on the island, I think that would be one that you would not want, you know, the police vehicle parked in front of or something like that. Or somebody's having a function where they're serving alcohol, God forbid if something happens, I mean, people recognize and see, well, there was an officer there. Like, that's the things I'm saying that shouldn't be tied into, where say, if you're going to do side work, these are some examples right now. There's a possibility it could come up at any time that it's never always going to be addressed, but then you address it at that point. But if you have some baselines that says, these are the type of things that you can't do.
The problem with state law is once there's a policy, state law says that an employer with a policy, an employee's only required to know or should know what's written in a written policy.
Right, but if you-
A policy creates a line, and once they cross the line, we can't do anything about it because we drew the line. If you say, the policy is nothing without our approval, and we'll improve, we'll approve them one by one, then you don't ever set a straight policy. The policy is at the discretion of the voted-in supervisor. If they don't want them to work at Carnival, they don't work at Carnival. This board decides where they want them.
I would have no problem with that.
Right, but what I'm saying is as soon as you list, as soon as you list, you cannot do A, B, C, and D. When they do E that's not on the list, there can be nothing done about it. They can't be discharged.
I know, but what I'm, all I'm getting at is I would make the recommendation, if you guys come up with a policy that says, hey, it has to be approved by the board, but maybe here is five things that are definitely, don't even-
What I'm saying is why put a limit on it? Why not just say it's the complete discretion of the board?
I think it'll eliminate some of the-
It's limitless.
Nonsense.
It'll be taken care of with supervisory experience, people with the experience with, with doing this.
By making a list, you give a limited list of things. But by giving them, giving them ultimate discretion-
Of it needs to be approved by the board, that's all I'm getting at.
Yeah, that's what I said, a policy that the board has absolute discretion. Don't worry about listing what they can or can't do, you tell us what you're going to do, and we'll decide whether you to do it.
Right, but each time.
Right, as long as it's not written, I'm fine. Written policies are the things that people use and get attorneys for to pick apart, to use as a defense for why they didn't follow the policy or why the policy doesn't address their specific circumstances.
It's fair to say we need to have a policy that we need to be approved, correct?
A policy that says the board of supervisors has absolute discretion, yes. That would be a great one.
That's what I'm getting at, I'm just using those as examples.
Yep, and, and I think that's, and that, and that was my suggestion, is just have one that says, if you're going outside work, money's passing through the township, come to the board, give us a written understanding of who it is, where you're going to be, what the dates are, and we'll, we'll look at it and give you a quick turnaround, so you don't miss it.
Helen, how much did we get from No Acres?
I'd have to check that, I don't know off the top of my head. That was last year or a year before? Yeah, I'd have to check, Lee.
Okay. Anything else at this point? Solicitor's report?
None currently. You, you and I, you, we all had the conversation last Wednesday, and I, and you know that I had a conversation with Lenny this morning, and that's as far as I am. But Helen's getting me some information, I have some calls into Attorney Wagner to pick up the two files, that there'll be some movement moving forward on. Outside of that, there's nothing else.
Okay, okay. All right, we have permit report?
Okay, um, you got your January or December permit report, and then I gave you the yearly reports. And also, we need, we have a recommendation to reappoint Jeff Holman to the Board of Uniform, the Uniform Construction Board of Appeals. The U C C B O A.
I moved Jeff Holman to reappoint it to that board.
I move that Jeff Holman be reappointed to that board.
Okay.
I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Highest habit, motion passed.
Okay, you have Perry County Economic Development Corporation sent you gentleman a letter, they are looking to amend their master sales agreements, which is part of the, I believe that's the federal grant they got?
Yes, the EDA.
Yeah, and they just sent you information that they're doing it and showing you what they want to change. I'm hoping they do that.
Basically, to give you a little bit of history, I do sit on that, on that board and it's, it's evolving in, developing into a new board. Everybody else had resigned on that board, Commissioner Rudy appointed me and Ms. Hunter onto the board, and we recently appointed two more board members, so we are up to five board members on that board. So we're in the process of reorganizing the, 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 the board that oversees the business park. And, so this is basically saying that part of the reorganization, we actually had to get documentation from the federal government, paid dearly for it, but be able to know exactly where we stood. There was a lot of questions about what couldn't go in there, what can go in there, who has to approve, who doesn't have to approve, all kinds of things that were left up in the air. So in the, in the, in the process of getting that information and going through it, our, I wouldn't say he's our solicitor, but there's an attorney that is giving some of his time to the board to help find some legal, where we stand legally and what we have to do. So really what this is asking is that because Penn Township and the municipal authorities are a part of this agreement when the business park came into place, that they have to notify us that they want to make modification. So really, it's just changing some words, a couple words where things were blank, were never filled in, now they're being filled in, okay? So, I really advise the two supervisors to read through it and to get a better understanding. If you do have any questions, I would send all those questions to Commissioner Paul Rudy, who chairs that board at this time. But we are moving forward in the business park, we're, I can't tell you exactly, but we do have some prospects, some very positive prospects, and we do have at least one or two developers that are interested in possibly purchasing the whole park and developing it, or developing it as need per request. Say, a doctor's office or an eye doctor and dentist wants to do a complex, they're be willing to come in and build it for them and lease it out to them for a period of time. Or developers will be, will be least willing to build a suit for them. So, are we going to see anything this year? By the time you get something started, it takes a good 13 months to actually get somebody moved in, but we are moving forward with the park. And once we start getting buildings on there, that's additional revenue, not only for the county, the school district, but additional revenue for the township. And, it brings jobs.
Yeah.
And that's the most important part, that was the whole purpose of that development, was to bring jobs. So, some positive things are happening there, but it could take a year before we actually start seeing anything being built in there.
Okay, next we have the conservation district?
Yeah, they get, sent us a letter with questions and answers for the chapter 102, the erosion sedimentation control, what some things are, what, who has to do what and all that. This is more like information for you guys.
Okay.
Now I was going to copy that to the planning commission, too.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead, where we took care of old business, where we took care of the Lanker update?
Mm-hmm, newsletter, I'm waiting to, articles.
Yes, we can have mine by Friday morning, hopefully.
And, we do have another hour, another week to get those to me, being that we are now doing the barbecue in April, so that gives me a little more wiggle room. Cece, are your articles the only ones I'm going to get from the authority?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. EMS?
Working on it.
What's the, what's the deadline again, Helen?
Uh, next Friday at the latest.
The fifth day.
Yeah.
And if, uh, Ryan or Mike, if you guys have any interest in putting an article in you as a new supervisor or, or you as an old supervisor? Not as an old and aged, as an...
Yeah, and I gave you guys what I have so far, look over it?
Yes.
Okay. What's that then? What's that? And that's all the old business I have.
Okay, we've already taken care of the Duncan and EMS under new business.
Mm-hmm, and donation of sick leave, I don't know if you gentlemen want to talk about that in executive session or not, I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Joe. As you know, we have an employee who's going in for surgery, he only has so much sick leave saved, and there's been two others who have volunteered to donate some, if it's approved by the board, this is not allowed in the manual, so it has to come before you guys.
So there is no policy in the manual?
No.
In the employee handbook?
No.
So basically what you're requesting, the individual, that we have two, two employees that are willing to donate some of their...
Sick leave.
Sick leave to this individual, to be able to give them the period of time of recuperation, not losing pay.
Yeah, because he's hoping to be in and out, but I really don't think he's going to be able to be back next week.
And, and both individuals are agreeing upon donating their...
I do.
Okay.
Does he have any issues with that?
No, it's, it's an exception to your manual, but your manual doesn't address it, doesn't say you can or can't, and so the board can make that decision on a case-by-case basis. Do we have to do this in the form of a motion or just agree upon it?
I would have a motion.
Yeah.
Simply because it's going to affect the three employees' benefits?
Okay.
And it's always, and it will be documented in the payroll folders and all that for the auditors.
Now, in the motion, do we have to name the individual and the employees or just say that?
I think you're fine if you incorporate the memorandum...
Okay.
From Helen dated January 27th, 2016.
Okay.
What the, I don't know that I'm reading it, but the, no, I'm fine. I missed the line, I was going to say, how much of each, but I see it, I see it.
All right. Any questions?
No, no questions.
Right, hold on.
Yes, I take that back. As far as the hours are concerned, the two parties involved are going to work out the number of hours if it falls less than these maxes. In other words, I have a list here that states that one individual has over 100 hours of sick time they're willing to donate.
Yes, both individuals have over 100 hours. One of the individuals...
If it comes out he needs 120, the two parties involved are going to...
They're only donating 40 each, yeah, 40 each.
Second, second paragraph, but the question still is valid.
It's still valid.
If he only needs 20 hours and they're donating 80, who do you allocate him to? And, and that's something that'll have to be worked, worked out. And that was the question.
So do they go, so divided by, and goes back to the individuals that donated them?
Right, what I would recommend to the board is just making it, make it, whatever he uses, they're both donating the identical amount of hours, whatever he uses less than that, the remainder be divided and given back to the donors.
Okay.
And they both gave him the same amount, so to speak.
Right.
If it's less.
I make that motion.
Okay, and I second that motion.
You'll find that happens a lot.
I second that motion.
I remember the phrase those better than...
To include the memorandum as a part of it.
Yes.
Do I, I second?
I accept that second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Highest habit, motion passes.
And that's all I have.
I just have one thing I'd like to add here, just real quick before we close. I also sit on the Perry County Economic Development Authority that oversees development for the whole county, and I can tell you that there's been some movement made to, I don't remember who, there's, I think it's Kretik, maybe Kretik, I'm not sure, but it's a, there's five phases to bringing natural gas to eight counties throughout the central north region here. Several counties are on board and already starting to receive natural gas through what they call compressions and decompression stations, kind of like a mother and a daughter type of situation where it costs a million dollars for UGI to lay a mile pipe to bring natural gas. So what they're wanting to do is that, these other counties are already doing it, they put in these, like a station where cylinders get filled, and then they come to a decompression station where then it gets pumped into businesses and homes and stuff like that, like you would pipeline, which the project for those centralized one that gets put in your communities and stuff like that, costs about $300,000 versus a million, okay? So, hopefully within the next six months to a year, maybe sooner, you're going to start hearing about these compression and decompression stations. Our neighbor to the south, Marysville, is already doing impact studies and already put out funding and grants to do this. Their new project up on the mountain, they're looking at putting a decompression station there. There's been nothing official, but there's been some conversation within Marysville and the county that possibly involving Penn Township in the future, possibly putting one of these compression stations here, which is the mother. And it's hard to explain at all, but I'm excited because it's an ideal situation for the business park, it gives one more infrastructure that makes it more attractive, because, and it's guaranteed right now that all gas, natural gas that's used must be Pennsylvania gas, stuff that's been manufactured in Pennsylvania or harvested in Pennsylvania. So, so it's a win-win situation, and it's not just for the business park, the decompression station could be moving into the homes in the area where we get homes that agree that, hey, if it comes, yeah, we'll, instead of fuel oil, we'll hook up the natural gas, you know, so there could be some type of impact agreement and stuff like that coming in the future. But just letting you know, it's a very positive thing that, that they're asking Perry County now to come in, come on, online with, with this eight county, eventually it'll be eight counties, I think we're going to be county three or county four that's already jumping into this. But more information coming, yes, Craig?
Is that, I had a meeting with Brenda Benner yesterday morning, is that, she mentioned Sunoco as doing pipeline work in the county, is that related, is that, is that who's involved?
I'm not sure, I didn't, I, the only other name I heard who Marysville is looking at to do, and I forget what their name is off the top of my head, but it very well could be.
She, she talked as though the Sunoco project was kind of a done deal, I don't know that Sunoco does natural gas as much as they do fuel oil, or fuel one.
Yeah.
She, she mentioned it, I mean, very casually, but it sounded like it was either underway or soon to be underway.
Yeah, and Sunoco could be a part of that group of suppliers, there may be several suppliers that may, may come in, you know, and stuff like that, so, but there's definitely a market for natural gas and right now it's dirt cheap, it's probably, I think they say 30% cheaper than fuel oil.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just FYI...
We're going to have to run a main gas line through to come off of?
No, what they do, this compression station, they have the big tanks that they come and fill, they could be underground, trucks pull in, they have cylinders that they fill, and then these cylinders then go out to these pads that are called decompression stations, and that's where it gets pumped into houses, but pipes have to be laid just from there, but there's a pad, oh, I'm sorry, there's a, we very well could have a pad over in the business park. We have a lot right now where, where it's the, it's one lot that's just for drainage, where the water, for drainage here and stuff like that. Part of that could be filled in even more, and a decompression station could be put there to supply natural gas, not just to the business park, but to Mutset Balls, and that's one thing you have to understand, Mutset Balls and the bank technically are not a part of the business park. The business park starts right there at the end of Members First. So from there on back, so the only two structures we have in the business park right now is the computer company and Holy Spirit. I believe there's nine lots left, and then there's the one lot that can't be used because that's where the drainage goes. But very well, it could be put there as a compression, decompression station, and that could supply, that could supply the whole area, you know, when I say the whole area, it could be part of 274, it could be down here, on the backside of Sunoco, that part of Duncan, so whoever wants to hook up to it. But again, they're going to come around and do studies and surveys, do people want it? And there could be grant and, grant money involved in converting your furnaces from fuel oil to, to natural gas, so, but even to make that change. So, but we just got to wait and see when it gets here, but I know Marysville is already, before we even, before the county even stepped into an agreement to be a part of this pack, Marysville's already, they're already six months to a year ahead of the ball, so, which is, which is pretty exciting. And again, Marysville has nothing official, just in conversations at these meetings I've been to, Marysville would be interested in the future, talking to Penn Township about working a co-op with this, and, and then again, it's going to bring some jobs, we're not going to look at a lot, but it will bring some jobs. So, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, I make the motion that this meeting be adjourned?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out.